Everybody here, ready to go?
Ready and willing. Steve looks like.
What's that, Fred?
I am. Steve looks like he's not still looking. Steve, you here?
Clear.
Okay.
I had to re-sign in because it wasn't, the audio wasn't working.
There we go.
I figured, you know, last meeting, something has to go wrong.
Okay, welcome everybody to Zoom December. Our workshop meeting. Tonight is last evening, we'll be sharing with Stephen and Lynn as fellow trustees. So I'd like to say thank you to both of you guys for five years of service and and all your time and efforts that went into it. You guys did a great job. And like I said before, it's really hard for working people with families and businesses to put in the time that, you know, necessary or any time at all, actually, for for meetings every weekend. And so you guys did a great job and it was a pleasure working with both of you. If we go back in time to when you guys both came on the board, I think it was a bit of a turmoil in the village and you guys really helped kind of level things off and bring back some dignity to the board. If I can say that. Anyway, I do appreciate it. I think you guys did a great job. We had a great board. And I feel confident that'll continue. But you guys are really great. And thank you so much. And we'll miss you and I'm sure you'll be around. We'll be, we'll be tapping into you once again, I'm sure. Maybe we'll get you on another board where you won't have to spend so much time. And that might, that might be very helpful for everybody. So thank you so much again. Do appreciate all your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. You'll be missed.
That's very nice.
We have a short, short agenda and then we'll get into code update. We will have public comment after just on the three or four agenda items before we get the code update and then we'll just go into more review by the board and won't be taking any public comment after that. And so let's kick this off with upcoming meeting schedules. I guess this is just a reminder. Tuesday, December 8th, we have a re-organizing meeting at 6:30. And then on December 15th, we have two presentations. Kind of, we had scheduled one and then another come up, I think. I don't think we knew in advance, but anyway, we'll juggle them. We'll start at six o'clock that meeting on the 15th. We'll have the audit results from the EFPR group and also discussion with Ted Fink regarding code update and secret. That'll be exciting, huh? You guys are gonna miss you guys going on re-up? You sure?
Tune in for that.
I'm sure you'll be glued to the screen that night. Okay, Lynn, this is your, your swan song here.
I move to approve batch number 5789 for a total amount of $19,031.45.
I will second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? I don't know who's gonna fill those shoes, Lynn. It's like, like Vanoway turning the letters. Next, we have approval of minutes, November 17th, Village Board. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? And lastly, November 24th, the approval of minutes for Village Board of Trustees. I'll make a motion to approve. All in favor? Before we get in the final our esteemed colleague, Matt Francisco, our chair of our planning board, wanted to discuss issues with water lines, I believe. So Matt, if you're on.
Hi.
Hey, Matt.
We'll do this before the re-organize. You can decide if you still want me to be the, the Planning Board Chair. So I just wanted to discuss. So obviously, there's a leak out in front of our house that was discovered a while back. We had the the mayor was helpful in getting the water superintendent over to take a look at it. And obviously, they kind of, you know, they kind of have to kind of guess as to where it's coming from, based on, you know, where the surface water pops up. And he thinks it's probably ours and then used a listing device. I was surprised to find out that that work is the homeowner's, so much so that the homeowner is supposed to perform the work. And so, you know, my concern in no particular order is, you know, that I would hire a contractor and cause them to perform work on the village's property, on the village's system, and then run the risks of anything that flows from that, right? Pun, pun not intended, but it, you know, who knows what's going to flow from that, right? So in doing that, you know, because, and I question the, the you're kind of the logic behind pushing it to the homeowner, because obviously, you've then got a bunch of, you know, disparate, you know, kind of people and, you know, and companies working on the village's system in the road. So I, you know, I mean, I imagine this was probably, you know, a monetary decision, because obviously, it's very expensive to open the road, but when I, you know, just when I speak to my insurance company, the, you know, my service line coverage ends at the curb. And when you look at the way most municipalities are looking at this, and I obviously am not an expert on this, but have learned a little bit in the last few weeks, is that the, you know, the municipal system, you know, starts at the curb or rather, the property line probably. And the, you know, the resident system, you know, the resident service line, you know, ends at your property line. And if you want to buy a service line endorsement, that's where the coverage ends. So I wanted to just kind of understand. I read through the code and the code talks about the maintenance of of the service lines. Unfortunately, the service line and the supply line, the definition in the code overlaps. In my mind, there is a, what is, what would be a municipal service line, which is from the tap or otherwise known the corporation cock running to the curb cock, right? That's obviously, that line exists, obviously, to service my property. But in my mind and in my insurance company's mind, that is the municipal service line. Then there's the curb cock, which is also the villages, because that's their ability to turn me off if needed for service or non-payment or whatever. And then everything from there, from there towards the house is then the residential service line. So, you know, I question, you know, that, that we, that we would want a homeowner, you know, causing work to be performed there. And obviously, the water superintendent looks at it and they, you know, and hopefully, they, you know, they are able to control everything that happens and the, and the work is good. But the reality of it is, at least in this instance, you know, I can't find anybody even to do it. And in speaking to the people over on Parsonage Street, there were four of them that kind of had a kind of domino effect where they were kind of, you know, it was kind of breaking up the hill as you went towards the top of the road at Parsonage there. That, you know, there's in calling these plumbers, and they're not really plumbers, they really have to be kind of roadwork, streetwork crews, because they also have to excavate. I guess what happened over at Parsonage, you know, because the homeowner Judith Baltich was, you know, kind of at, she didn't really know what to do and was kind of given a list of plumbers. And she ended up with, I think, a local plumber who then worked with a local landscaper to dig the hole and open it up. And I guess everything turned out okay. My biggest concern is just that, you know, that as, as a person that engages the contractor and then causes them to perform work on this system, there's no question that I own the risk of whatever happens, right? Good or bad, you know, and if, you know, in the event that there were, you know, and I think it's, has to be pretty difficult to touch this system, you know, in its current condition and age without, you know, kind of the, the potential for cascading issues, right? Because of fragile connections or fragile pipes and then any damages that flow from that, obviously, come back to me. So I guess I want to, I guess the first question is, is that the village board's intention, am I understanding, and is the water, the water superintendent seems very clear? And the last few instances of this is, in his mind, have been very clear that the homeowner owns this, the homeowner has to find somebody to do it. Is that, is that the village boards? And certainly, you don't have to answer. I appreciate you guys even talking to me on short notice.
Can I, can I jump in for a second? Because we, we had this done a couple of years back. My neighbor's line broke. And knowing that the lines are old here, we opted to have our line done also. Greg Phillips was the water superintendent at the time. He recommended, and we did get, it's not just a, we got a plumber and an excavator, two different companies, and he recommended both, you know, a few companies in each area. We picked the excavator. He dug the hole and stuff, and then the plumber came, looked at it, and, you know, the line had to be changed from the house out to the main, because they're old and because it was blocked and it was, it was rotted.
Was your, what your, did the issue present itself on your property or in the street?
No, actually, it, actually, the issue, my neighbor had an issue, but we opted at the same time to get it done. To get ours done, because we knew that the lines are just as old and we'd rather have it done before breaks. The fact of the matter is, the pipe was rotten from, from the main out in the street through to our house, totally blocked or just about totally blocked. So it didn't have much life left in it. So the whole pipe was changed, but it's a case of, I don't know if you can say like, you know, all right, from the curb to the main is the villagers and from the main to the house, because it's one pipe. And the pipes are old and, you know, I mean, you know, Greg was helpful. The plumber came, he came in with a plumber, the plumber came into the house, went out to the street. Greg approved, everything was done before the the ground was reclosed. And if you come out, you can see the patch of, of whatever it is outside of my house where they patched the ground. We didn't have a problem, but, you know, it never done to me that it should be anything but my responsibility, because the pipe is coming from my house and it was the whole pipe that needed to be changed. I don't remember the price and I could get you the names of the companies. I don't have.
Probably, it, it probably is Greg's list. And when I called them all, it was almost like all roads led back to this one guy, Pizzarella. Who was doing, who was doing everybody's excavating, had a pretty unpleasant interaction with him yesterday that ended in him. Because I think his biggest thing is that he really sees the municipality as the customer. And so when he came out at like seven o'clock at night a week or so ago, but said he couldn't get here till the week after Thanksgiving. And I said, well, I don't think anybody's gonna get here. You know, I mean, that's, you know, it's three days away. You know, I said, and if it's Monday for the wrong guy or Friday, whatever your date is for the right guy, and everybody says you can do this. John McGuire, who's a local plumber, suggested him as well. You know, so then he ultimately, I guess, had some scheduling conflicts and says, you know, he never can, you know, he never confirmed and I'm, you know, putting words in his mouth. And I'm like, I left several messages at your office and said, would you please confirm that you're actually coming back out? You could have responded to one of those. But whatever, they're very busy. They're all very busy. Reached out. So I've spoken to 14 different people and have gotten no's from all of them. I got one yes at the end of the day from somebody up in Duchess who said, we, but you have to open the road before we'll even come out. Which obviously is not, look, I mean, I may be, I'm very close to this, because obviously, I buy construction and I manage construction for my companies and I, you know, and I was an owner's rep for many years. So you kind of are hypersensitive or maybe just aware of the risk of when you start to touch it, because the last guy that touched it owns it, you know. So to say that, oh, an excavator is going to open and not cause any further damage, right? And then you're not going to have people out in the road pointing fingers at each other. I don't, I don't, I don't really have the stomach to kind of say, oh, let's just, you know, get somebody to open, somebody to come and look at it, then somebody to close, especially if they don't have a relationship. But what turned out was that at least on the original list, all roads led back to Pizzarella to open, other than Jason Leonard, who had used South Padala once, I think. But, you know, a landscaper is not always the best person to be digging in a trench with, you know, with, you know, with fragile piping beneath it. A lot of these guys. What's that?
He's not a landscaper. He owns an excavation company.
Oh, he's just excavation now?
Well, he owns a landscaping business that he doesn't really, he just owns it, I guess. But he and his father have been in excavation. They do know their business.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I spoke to, I spoke to Mark McGuire and he was, he suggested Pizzarella. He's, so anyway, but anyway, that turned out not to be a problem. So then Matt sent me another list of another like 10 or so. I called them all, they're all, and they're all telling the same story that first of all, they can't believe it's the homeowner's work, because in, in their experience, I'm not saying that's not, that it's not done, but it is def, without question, it's unusual to have the, you know, to have the homeowner working out in the street. So, but there, and I think that's why it's been so difficult to get someone. There's another leak. And I understand that they're having trouble getting someone as well, but that's, you know, I mean, look, I think probably the reality of that is just that they're not used to dealing with the homeowner, whether or not it's emotion, you know, or whether or not it's, are you really going to have, you know, several thousand dollars in cash the minute I close this hole, right? As opposed to municipal company where, you know, a municipal customer where, you know, checks are cut twice a month. And if you, you know, you get in on a payment cycle and your check's going to be cut, you know, and there's no question about it. I spoke to the guy that does caramels, who is actually very, very nice, Ed Crook, who also said, you know, this is not your work. You need to push back on this. And I said, well, it's pretty clear in the code. I said, but he said he could come and take a look at it, but has not come out to take a look at it ultimately. And so I'm, you know, after calling a lot of these folks, that's kind of where I am. You know, and my, I'm very nervous, like I said, about, you know, having work performed out in the street that I am paying for and then he, and then any damages that flow from that work that I've directed, right, that I've caused to happen in the street. Now granted, obviously, I could just say, well, the village made me do it, but that doesn't protect me really from claims if, you know, my neighbor's house floods or, you know, or, you know, they're cut off from water service for days on end and you know, and they have damages, whatever they might be. So I did, I mean, I guess I wanted to first get the position that if that, if that, if we're understanding the code correctly, I know Matt's new. Matt seems to be quite clear that it's all on the, it's all on the owner, all the way to the main. He did say, obviously, you can't know what's happening underground. You can just make your best guess, which is informed by the water superintendent with some listening equipment. But they did say, he and Scott both said, you know, you're going to open up. And if it turns out not to be you and it's the main or your neighbor, well, then it everything changes. I don't quite know how that change happens. And how this, you know, the contract I signed is then, you know, handed off to somebody else or I'm not sure how that actually works, nor, nor do I know if the village is all that thrilled about then paying, you know, retail rates for the work that I contracted, right? You know, if obviously, we open this up and it turns out to be, oh, it's the main leaking and it's just following the line of my pipe, because the water presented itself on the opposite side of the street, the surface water. And it wasn't until he came up with a lip, listening device a few weeks later, where he said, no, we still think it's yours, it's closer to yours. And now the water's coming up kind of towards the middle of the street. But again, it's all, you know, the best informed choice until you, you don't know anything until you open up. So, and then at the point Scott and, you know, Matt was saying, but obviously, if you open up, then obviously, the, you know, and it turns out not to be you, well, then we'll have a discussion. I'm not quite sure how that all happens. So I guess I wanted to get the village board's opinion that this is, this is your expectation and your read on the code. Mine, if that's so, my next step would just be to talk to my lawyer to say, am I, am I covered to go do work out in the street? Because I, you know, again, I'm very sensitive to this, risk averse and, you know, and in managing construction and seeing things go sideways on job sites and, you know, whatever, you know, the, you know, the cleaning company uses the wrong cleaner on the floor that was flown in from Siberia, right? And it now has to all be ripped up, right? So the cleaning, you know, the cleaning company owns the floor that costs more than they were ever making 10 years. And they own the floor. And that's a shitty thing, right?
A couple of things. At first, I think that the board wasn't really totally sensitive or understanding of the code, because I mean, I know there's been a number of openings during my tenure and there never seemed to have been a problem. And it's always been, my understanding was it always was the homeowner's responsibility if everything up to the connection or the connection to the main. And so, you know, I, this is kind of new to me, like how everything happens and just from.
There's never, there's never been, I'm sorry, there's never been a problem, I'm getting, getting a plumber or there's never been a problem with something else?
I've, I've never heard of anyone that had a problem getting, getting an opening of having the opening done and, or I mean, I just haven't heard anything related to that coming back to the village where like a resident is, is upset or has paid for something they don't believe they should pay for. You know, or some damage that has happened during, during a, an excavation, you know, to the pipe. So whether or not it's happened or not, I don't know, but I haven't been familiar, I'm not familiar with any incidents when that's happened. The other thing that I, I would, I wonder is if you have an excavator and he's either bonded or whatever insurances he's need to open up a road or to be working on a road and they damage a pipe or something, how would that come back to the homeowner? And not his responsibility?
The reality, no, you're right. He would certainly be primary, right? But if you tap out their insurance plan, right, whatever the damages are. And I, and I will assure you that the attorneys will say sue everybody, right? Name everybody. You know, and if an insurance company has to pay out on a claim, you know, it all depends what the number is. Right? And what their coverage is, but $20,000 doesn't go very far. You know, I mean, if, if you flood a house or you know. And I don't know, I don't, I don't know if there's, again, I don't, you know, it's, it's hard to say what could happen. I do know over on Parsonage that when they did the one, then the next door neighbor who never had a problem, then had a problem after that work was performed. And then they had to do theirs. You know, so this stuff does have a, does have a tendency to domino, but, and I don't, and, and, you know, when I spoke to the, a few of those folks, they said they didn't ever contact the village hall. You know, they, they basically said, what am I going to do? I need water. I had to get it fixed, you know?
One of our greatest problems, no one, no one, no one contacts us when they're at the problem. We're supposed to know about it.
Yeah, no, yeah, exactly. I, that's what I always say. It's not that no news is good news, right? Because it's just, it's pretty much typically just no news.
My feeling after, and I talked to Matt earlier, and then I also talked to my crew about, about how, how we proceed with things. I just feel like there should be some type of document created and served on the resident and signed by the resident with their understanding that we will dig the road. I think it's, I think it should be our responsibility to dig and and to find out where the leak is. And then if it is, you know, the line leading from their house to the connection for our code, then they, they'll be responsible for that cost. I do see Matt's, you know, you know, concerns about having someone else on a road or, you know, I think the main problem on Morris is that you're actually on a state road and
Oh, God.
Who wants to work out on a state road?
Yeah, that's one of the questions most of them ask. They're like, this isn't a state road, is it? It's like they were going to hang up if it was a state road.
So I'm not sure how we proceed, but I, I think we should and I told this Matt Krug that we should, you know, the water has been leaking for weeks now. I'm not sure the, you know, the total amount. I'm sure it's fairly significant. If we have another one that's two leaks that we should, you know, we should find someone and take care of it and bill the customers if it is indeed there's. I don't know other people on the board feel on that. And maybe we should change that code or do something like I suggested, like, you know, make the owner totally aware or have him sign some type of document with states that you understand that it's your responsibility if we dig this up and it is from your line to the connection or to the main. I mean, it's always been the responsibility of the owner. And I agree with that. I just don't agree with how, you know, having an owner has absolutely no you know, experience with the, you know, the contractor world to go out there and find someone and have, be confident that they're going to be good at what they're doing. And then have them dig in, like, like Matt said, potential of breaking another pipe. I don't think that's a great idea. It seems to have worked all these years. I don't know how, or maybe we just don't know about incidents where it's totally gone awry, but that would be my feeling.
I agree with you, Dave. I think we could alleviate a lot of trouble and misunderstanding and potential problems for homeowners if if somehow or other, like the village was the lead agency in that, in repairs of that nature. But with the understanding that if it's any, you know, if it's a leak, there's the homeowner's responsibility, it's the homeowner's responsibility. But anytime a road gets opened up, I think we should, I think the village should, should have kind of lead agency on all of that.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't, I mean, in this particular instance, I think like I'm concerned that Matt Krug doesn't quite know where the leak is. So to ask Matt Francisco to open it up when he's not sure that it's his pipe, I think is an issue. I think for that reason, I don't mind us opening the street. But when I had it done, I mean, there was a list of accepted, you know, excavators and accepted plumbers. And I realize, Matt, you're having a hard time getting someone to agree to this. But I think if the homeowner uses something that we have recommended or that, that is accepted and does this, I think rather than the village picking up another layer of something to do that is just going to complicate things, you know, we're going to pay for it, then we're going to bill you, then we're going to chase you, make sure you pay for it, and how are you going to pay for it, so on and so forth. I mean, it seems to have worked well up to this point. I mean, my biggest concern at this point is that Matt Krug isn't quite sure where the leak is coming from, whether it's your pipe, whether it's the main, whether it's someone else's pipe. And that, that in my mind means that we need to, to at least find out where the leak is.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's fair to say that he can know, right? I mean, it's under the ground. The water first presented itself across the street. Then for a day or two, it was, it was near the middle. That went away, it went back across the street. The main is on that side of the street where the water presented itself at the curb. And then he came out with a listening device and said, I hear the most water here. Right? But that, that's obviously the path of the water, which could be the break, or it could just be the path of the water. Especially because as the, as the leak continues, it pushes away the, you know, the dirt that quiets it and keeps it, you know, keeps it compacted. So it's just gonna, you know, it's just, and it's, and then obviously, as it, as it becomes, as it comes above ground, it's going to go with the grade, right? Which the far side of the street is downgrade for me. So it makes sense that it would end up there, but actually, that's where it started. So I don't know that it's, you know, I mean, I don't certainly, I don't think it's any failure of Matt's to, I don't know. Unless houses were much further apart, you know, we've got three of them, at least two of them, our, our curb cocks are directly across the street from each other, right? So the service line is probably coming out of the main, probably right at the same point. You know, so it's, you know, I don't know that it's, would be kind of knowable. And I am working with the list that, with Greg's list, that's, you know, who I called through. And it's not working. Well, Jason Leonard said he can, he at least, he turned down the Morris Avenue one, because I guess it was, it was very complicated. It was a state road, right? That's why he didn't want to get involved in that. But then he said he would, they took a message from me and I spoke to his office manager that called me back, because he said he, he's too busy, but he might take it, but it's not a straight answer. And he doesn't have an excavator. But I think he uses South Padala. He did over on, on Parsonage.
Main Street also. They have the plate to put over it and everything. So you can leave it open for, you know, if you have to wait for different, you know, members of municipality or insurance or whatever that show up, you can put the plate over it so that they can have access. You know, until they really need to finally finish the work.
I think the, the village gets involved right, right at the get-go anyway. The water's leaking. We have to go out there. We have to determine where it is or who we feel you know, it belongs to, to the best of our ability. Then we're going to have to coordinate, no matter who hires the plumber, we're going to have to coordinate with them to cut off roads, to block roads, to do whatever, you know, notifications are needed. So we're involved, you know, from that go anyway. I just think it's, I think it's better if it's our responsibility. And yes, we might have to go tracking down people, but I'm sure there's ways that we can, you know, we can get that money easily. I just think it's our, you know, it's it's kind of our responsibility. We should find someone, we should coordinate it. And, but the homeowner has to know in advance and has to agree or understand that it's his responsibility.
Right.
On the Morris Avenue leak, it appears as if the leak is on the property of the homeowner.
Oh.
They the leak is, is emanating from the utility strip. That's where the water's coming out. But the listening device indicates that it is closer to the, to the residents than to the roadbed. Unfortunately, on Morris Avenue, the main is on the west side of Morris Avenue. And the homeowner lives on the east side of Morris Avenue. So that, that's but, but it appears as if the leak, the leak is much closer to the house and may not even involve the road.
Yeah, that's very, that's very different. That, I mean, that's kind of my understanding of these things. And I don't, I don't doubt that other municipalities and I'm finding out that Cold Spring, you know, but the, the, the normal tech, you know, the normal course and, and when I speak The, the, the normal tech, you know, the normal course, and, and when I speak to all these folks that do the work, they say, no, no, you don't own anything past the curb, nor should you be out there. Right? And I, and I think, you know, but I guess that I. You know, so, uh, uh, and obviously the way the system works, right? There's the corporation cock shut off, the tap to the main, right? So you can shut the service to the house off. But even after that. You know, what, what is the, what in my mind is the residential service line is from the curb cock, you know, to the house. That's absolutely mine. And the village's system is set up in such a way that they can shut it off at the curb. If I don't pay, or if I need, or if my line is leaking and can keep everybody else in service and protect their system. Right? You know, the only, the only way you could shut it off from the main, if, if there's a leak on what I would refer to as the municipal service line. Which is that, you know, from the corporation cock at the main to the curb box. The corporation cock, the tap right into the main has a shut off as well, but obviously you gotta dig up four feet. And turn that, right? There's no, that doesn't, that doesn't come up to the roadbed. So, um.
I haven't done like a big municipality check on how others handle, but I know Beacon is, I'm not sure who's responsible for hiring, but they're responsible for. The connection to the main. Cause my friend that works for me once in a while had to have it done, had to have it dug.
And that's on, that's on maintenance of existing service or establishing new service?
Uh, maintenance. It was a break in the line where the connection was.
A break, yeah, okay.
Or you've lost, uh, water?
Was that?
No, uh, no, that's just it. No loss in water pressure. And I haven't told Matt, and he was, Matt's been great, by the way. Um, I haven't said, you know, I kind of feel like, you know, cause Dave, you helped, I called, you got him to come out. I said, I kind of feel like I'm getting this because I'm the guy that came out of his house and is talking to you. I said, cause the water's across the street from me. I said, and I'm not losing water pressure.
Is anyone?
No. So I told him, I said, you know, I said, I don't. And then the next day I wrote him another email, cause I just kind of said, well, I guess I'm doing this. And. Then I, you know, I thought about it that night. And the next morning I sent him another email saying, hey, wait a minute. I said. Am I, is this just cause I was the guy that came out and talked to you? And he, and he, you know, he was very nice. He's like, these are all reasonable questions. He goes, let me come back out with a listening device. At that point he just came. And we're looking at a wet spot in the road, which is across the street from me. So I'm like, well, if the wet spot is, you know, ruling the day, then I'm the farthest guy from the wet spot. You know, and it's literally, it's starting right in front of my neighbors, you know, Seeley Glick's old place. It's Megan and Mike now. Um, right at their curb cock. You know, so I'm like, if we're just going by a visual, why, why, you know, I, you know, why don't you come out, you know? It's just like, it was really kind of funny, but you know, you just kind of wanna, you know, get it done. And so I sent him another email and he was very good. And so. He, he said, okay, hold off. Don't start calling plumbers then. I'll come out with a listening device. It took him a while. They had a bunch of stuff going on. And then he said that it's kind of towards the middle of the street, but it's all in, this is all in the street. This is nothing on my property. So, but I don't, you know, look, I don't wanna hijack your whole meeting. I just, I, I appreciate your time. I just. I just don't really know how to proceed because I'm not getting anybody that's, it looks like they're even gonna do this. And I suspect it's because it's a, you know, do, are they really gonna get paid by a homeowner, right? If this just keeps spiraling, you know?
I don't see how it would be, uh. Your responsibility in any way, that, that you, you have no loss of water, your neighbors have no loss of water. There's a wet spot. Forty-five feet from your front porch in the middle of the street, which is where the village water supply runs. So I don't understand how it ended up in your lap in the first place. It doesn't make a lot of sense.
Well, I think, look, I think, I, look, I think Matt's trying, he's interpreting the code, and I think he's just saying, look, the code says it's the homeowner. The one thing I do have is I have this noise on my meter that I reported about a year ago. And I said, I, you know, it sounds like there's water running at my meter, but now we have the digital meters. I can look at it. There's no water going through it. But it sounds like the shower's running. It sounds like some, like there's a lot of flow. I'll turn the meter valve off, you know, the shut off. It'll tamp down the sound a little bit, but I told him, I said, listen, that thing's basically gonna act like a speaker, right?
Exactly.
It's going out to the main and wherever this turbulence is, it's traveling through the pipe. I said, that doesn't necessarily mean it's my pipe, but again. I'm the guy outside. I'm giving my email. So I get the email to say, fix the water. And we'll come back if it's us, right? And I'm like, how does that work? I'm not hiring an archaeologist, right? I'm hiring, you know, with, with paintbrushes and little shovels and, you know, to, you know, carefully open it. I'm hiring somebody with a, you know, with a backhoe. That I understand Pizzarella will just do the first foot, but mechanically, and then shovels everything else by hand. I understand other people do very different things. Uh, you know, and so you run the risk of, and this happened to me in the Adirondacks, you know? My neighbor has a backhoe, decides he's gonna help me with my sewer. I wanna dig it by hand, and I watch him pull my sewer line up. On the Fourth of July, you know, and I'm like, okay, great, you know, so I would have preferred to just shovel. It's just sand. You know, so anyway, but anyway, so anyway, that's just, you know, and look, maybe I've seen too much and, you know, the, you know, the projects that I work on are. They're big dollars. And so it's just like, you know, you, it's just the last guy that touched it is the guy you need to talk to. So I agree, and I appreciate your openness to consider, maybe I shouldn't be touching it. Until we know whose it is, cause that makes a lot more sense to me. Whether or not. I personally believe, well, and professionally believe, it's a municipal burden. That I think, I think the municipal's job, the municipality's job is to bring the water to my curb, right? I don't go out in the street to get my water. And if that requires bonding and requires, you know, an upgrade of the system, you know, then that's, that's a different question, you know? But for me to go out into the curb to get my water, like what Steve is saying. I don't have an issue, right? I don't have any loss in water pressure. I don't have anything other than. Noise on my meter, which is obviously just acting like a, you know, like a speaker. You know, so I'm, you know, it, it, there's nothing that causes me to, to do that. Obviously, if I have a leak on my property. The vill, the system is set up in such a way that they can shut me off, right? And stop that loss. And they can, they can force me and compel me to do work on my property. Which we need to have the ability to do with residents, right? But there, it doesn't work the other way where, you know, it can be shut down the other way and I can compel the village, you know?
Well, I'll talk to Matt again. I tried to call Matt and ask him if he'd hop on, but he hasn't responded, so, uh.
Okay.
Anyway, um, I, I feel, I'll talk to Matt tomorrow. Um, I, I had talked to him and, uh. You know, I, he seems very confident that, that it. It's, it's your line, but, um, and I don't know if it's just from hearing or whatever he's adding up and coming up with that, but, uh. I trust him on that. But, um, again, there is a little mystery to it, so. Uh, I think Bugsy has offered to, to dig it up. Um, he's done enough. I think Ed used to dig him all, up all the time, and he's really good at a backhoe. Bugsy's not quite that talented or, and he'll admit that, but he's, uh, willing to, you know, slowly go at it. And if we can't get him, we'll, we'll fi, find an excavator. I'm, I'm sure there's someone that we can get that's. Does it for a living that's competent and, uh. Has the archaeological touch.
Better you than me.
Okay.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your time.
All right. Thanks, Matt.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Good night, Matt.
Good night.
Is there, uh, anything, do you got anybody, wanna discuss anything else before?
I just wanted to make one, one request. Um. I had somehow or other misplaced the, the link to the Zoom, you know, the Zoom login link. And so I went to the village, um, website. And y- you really need to do some digging on the website to actually find that link. I think we wish, we should really move it to our, our homepage. And, uh, if we can get that done, I, you know, if we can do that, I think that would be a great thing. That's all.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I think I brought that up. I think the easiest way I found is you go to the board, the village board, and then. That, then you go down to the scroll to the bottom, so it's not even on your front first page. Scroll down to get to the Zoom link to click on.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not user friendly. It just, um, and it's not really intuitive to try to find it. So. If we could just put it on the homepage, move it to the homepage, I think. Um. I think residents would. Probably participate a little bit more and just also appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I'll talk to Jeff.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone else's feeling on, uh, opening it up? Is everyone okay with that? Opening, having, uh, you know, dealing with this, the waterline mats and, uh, taking care of that, or at least finding the leak going from there.
Yeah, I think in terms of trying to locate a leak, unless it's obviously somebody's, you know. Service line to their house from our main, then. That should be us. So we, we own the roadbed. We own all that. I mean. I don't, I don't know why it was set up that way in the first place.
I guess, I don't know how many times it's, uh, when they can't really tell. Talking to Matt, he seems really confident this is where it is. I mean, there, there's definitely a chance that it's not, so we'll see, we'll see, but, uh. You know, like I said, I haven't heard of, uh. Any problems like this before, not to say that there haven't been, but. So I'd like to, I'll talk to Matt and I'll, I'll find an excavator if, if Matt can't or Bugsy can't handle it. And like Steve said, we can put a steel plate over the top of it or whatever's needed till we, you know.
Yeah.
Till we find out, you know, find the people to do it. Can't just keep leaving it, uh, the water coming out of it for, forever. And then it's gonna start freezing. We're lucky it hasn't started freezing as, as it is.
The only thing I see is the, uh, if, if we do discover that it's Matt's service and he has to have it replaced. You know, what? What amount do we charge the homeowner?
If it's what?
For the work that we've done. So we opened the street up, which, uh, and we discovered that it's Matt's service line. In, in his example.
And I think it's clear that.
Fill them for the village time?
Well, it depends on who does it. No, I think it's. I think it's clear that the repairs are the co, owner's expense. You know, or code. If we wanna change that, we can change that, but right now, the way it is, that's their responsibility.
Right.
So, and I guess like to Matt's point, if they do dig it up, I'm not how they worked that out if it wasn't their line, or maybe it's always been clear. I don't know. Um, but if it isn't their line, then what do you do if you've hired them as a, as a resident, you know, and it's not your problem? It's like, okay, well, good luck to you, um, handing this one off. To the neighbors next doors and not mine. I, I think that if we, we dig and we find it, whoever does it, then the time, you know, whatever it's taken to that point or to remake the repairs should be the homeowner's expense.
Right. And if it's not the homeowner's issue, then we're, then we're doing the work anyway.
Yeah, exactly.
So, but in this particular s- situation, um, it, it appears as if it's Matt's service line. But there's the possibility that it may be Seeley Glick's service line. As well, since it is closer to her house than to Matt's house. You had talked about an agreement with, between the village and the resident. Um, or the homeowner. In this case, should. Agreements be reached with both Matt and. Seeley Glick's house?
I, 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 good point. I think, I think that should be, you know, there should be the understanding. Or if it's in our code and it's law and you dig it up and whatever, then it's a responsibility. They're gonna get the bill. Um, I, I don't know. I mean, they can say, yeah, we agree to or understand that, but I, I don't know. Is it necessary? I, I just thought that was. The thing to do would be to notify the neighbors that, you know, who's, who's you think it is? And if there is the possibility, uh. Uh, I don't know. Do you think they should be? Or do we should, should we do it and then say, you know, we had, there's a leak, we dug it up. It, it's your connection. This is our code, your responsibility. Here's the bill.
Yeah, I, I think that, I mean, the, the first part of the conversation with Matt was, uh. The theory that the homeowner, um, should have an agreement with the village. Um, as to what is being done. And if it turns out that it's the homeowner's service line, then that homeowner. Pays for the work that's done. In this case, because the service line is, sorry, the main is on the other side of the street. It's possible, although. Matt seems, and I have every confidence in Matt, it seems as if it's, sorry, I have every confidence in, confidence in Matt Krueg. Although it seems that it's Matt Francisco's line. It's possible that it's. Seeley Glick's old house's line. So maybe, maybe notification needs to go to both of them. That if, what it, if it's in either one of their service lines, they will be billed for the labor. Uh, the, uh, equipment, um, village labor, whether it's highway or, uh, waters. Um, and whatever, uh, subcontractors have to be hired.
And just, if I may, Matt had also said that. It, it, it could be the main, right? They said if it turns out it's the main itself. You know, a slight crack in the main or some issue with the main. Again, he, it's his, it's his informed opinion. He knows how to look at this stuff, but nothing's known until you open.
Right. And if it's the main, then it's the village's responsibility, financial responsibility.
Okay. See if we can come up with a quick draft or something to, uh, drop off.
That, that addresses the, um, Orchard Street leak. There's the Morris Avenue leak. Uh, I spoke with Tom on, uh, Saturday or Sunday. And he's having similar problems as Matt is having. Matt Francisco's having in terms of finding someone who will come to take a look at it. Uh, but as I said, the, the area that, that. The expert seems to have identified is actually on his property or on the sidewalk. So it's not. The good news is it doesn't appear to be in Route nine, on, in Route 9D. However, they can't find the curb cock. They don't know where that is, so they, they can't. Figure out, they have to locate the curb cock to turn off the water. That goes to, uh, Tom and Anna's house. And, and Matt has been there. Uh, I'm, and Scott may have been there with him. Uh, they have been there and they've. Given him as much attention as they can. And right now Tom is trying to line up. An excavator to come in and dig. And is finding the same problems that Matt Francisco has encountered.
Was it, there was a problem on, on, right in that area, was it when Richard was?
Yes, when Richard, uh, it was on, in the driveway between, um, the old house and the new house. And I think it was before the new house went up. And they, I think it was, it's, it's the, the pizza guy, Matt. I think they did the excavation. The good news is they didn't have to go into much of the roadbed. They were able to find the leak on the side of the road, almost to the, um, uh, right of the, uh, fog. A fog line. So it, it was not in the main portion of the roadbed.
And how did they cut the work at that point? Or is that, was that from, they could locate that one?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how they did that. I. As it turns out, I was working that day and I, I don't know how they got it handled.
Seems like Scott should know that, I would think.
And that's the only reason I know where the water main is, is because that's where, um, Richard's, uh, line came from.
All right. I'll, I'll follow up. Tomorrow and, uh, see what we can do. Know any excavators, Steve, that I don't?
Uh, I think you know all the same ones I know. I mean, I have seen Sal dig up Main Street, Padaala, so.
Yeah, I think he did.
Clearly knows what he's doing.
He dug the ones on, uh, Pine Street, just as you go into Nelsonville too.
Right.
Lines and connections.
Yep.
I'm sure he's, uh, he's got the.
Busy man.
What's that?
He's a busy man.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk then. We'll talk to him. Then we gotta find a plumber, but I think we could do that if it was open and someone can see what we're, we're dealing with. All right, um, there's one other thing I just wanted to bring up, uh, just so that you know, um, Jen Zork, uh, called today, um. From their grant money, they had some leftover from the pruning, uh, twenty-four hundred and forty-seven, or well, I think they have like three thousand left over. Um, and so I approved, it was under $3,000. I approved using that to stump grind. Um, so she's gonna have someone come in and stump grind. There's like, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, eight trees with large stumps, uh, that were left. Um, Bugsy usually has to rent something or use it from the county and whatever. It's a whole. Takes a whole lot of work and, uh, takes their time. So, uh, she thought it'd be a good use of the, uh, grant money. So I gave her the okay on that, so hopefully everyone's okay with that. Um, so it was $2,447 that's gonna go to the stump grinding. And that's all I have. Any, anything else? Where we, uh, do we have public comment on anything before we go into our code update?
Uh, Kathleen Foley has her hand up.
Or tell her to put it down. Is it in a nice gesture?
No, it's a nice gesture. It's a nice gesture. Figuring out how to lower it.
Never know with people like.
You never know. Um, just, just for what it's worth, uh, um. A lot of municipalities handle this by having these water main issues by having the property owner responsible to the property line. Um, I know in Ithaca, where my rental property is, I am responsible to the property line and I can't touch. An inch beyond my contractor. an inch beyond. My contractor can't touch an inch beyond until a city inspector comes and, and checks it out and sees what the problem is. And the, the city approves any work that's not there, um, that the, the responsibility of the property owner ends at the property line, um, which seems like the cleanest and most sensible. I, I don't, I don't quite understand how. I don't quite understand how, how a property owner is held responsible for pipes that are not on their property.
I think, I think maybe, uh, maybe the thinking was, okay, the municipality, uh, they, the infrastructure is their main lines. They're, they run through the, a network through the town or the village or whatever. And so if you want it connected, then you're, to get to your house, you have to connect to the main. So I think that's, that, that would be my feeling, or that's how they probably came up to here. It's your responsibility because the main's there, that's ours. It's there for people to use, but if you want to use it, you have to tap into it.
Right, but to.
That's right or not, I, I don't know. That's just how I feel like.
Pipe, to access the pipe though, you're digging through village asset. Right, you're digging through the street that belongs to the village.
Because that's the way it was built here. It kind of ends up that way. And a lot of places, you don't have to go off of your property to meet the municipal connection because it takes place right there.
Cause there's a curb cock further in.
Right there.
Yeah.
So.
Not so much that there's a curb cock, but the water main is.
A cock, something that cuts off the water line at the property line.
But my, my line goes from my house to the main. And when I changed the pipe, it was the pipe from the inside of my house to the main that needed to be changed. It's one pipe. And so I hit the, you know, where I can't say I'm going to pay for a foot and a half in the village just to pay for three feet because that.
Well, I mean, that's how, that's how, when I had to replace my sewer line in the city of Ithaca, that's how it was. I, I was billed for, you know, I paid for the portion that was on my property and the city paid for the portion from the property line to the main, because that was their property.
They're protecting their property that way.
Exactly, exactly. I think that's, that's part of the consideration too, is protecting the asset, the village asset.
But, but that is not the way the law is here, both for. The water.
Right. It seems, it seems like it leaves a lot of question on both, both sides of the equation. Anyway, throwing that out.
See you next week.
See you next week.
Thanks, Helen.
Anyone else, uh?
No other hands are up.
Okay. If there are no other hands, going once, going twice. Okay, um, we'll be going to code update, uh, review. Everyone's welcome to stay with it if they'd like. And, uh, let's, let's go at it. Let's get ready to rumble, if you can say that. I think it's copyrighted.
Um, before we get into one thirty four, um, it is my expectation that short-term rentals will be dealt with in a sep- in a separate chapter. Is that agreed? Okay, it is all still my, my rejection that short-term rentals will probably get, um, passed prior to the code update.
Yes, I would, I would like that to happen, yes.
Okay, so what I recommend is that in chapter one thirty four, we remove all references to overnight accommodations. The phrase overnight accommodations was inserted into chapter one thirty four by the code update committee to describe and, and, uh, uh, put together the rules and regulations for what is now known as short-term rentals. So I think we should remove the phrase overnight accommodations and any definitions associated with that phrase from chapter one thirty four. And that the short-term rental, um, uh, the phrase short-term rental is a direct, um, uh, reference to the chapter that is being defined for short-term rentals.
So, that said, where, where does hotel in, in fall?
Oh, well, there's, there is no in. Uh, there are hotels are, are defined i- in the definitions. And they are identified.
In the definitions where the?
Pardon me?
In the definitions of one thirty four or in the?
In the definition, in the definitions of one thirty four. Okay, so, um, it's under, uh, hotel, there is a definition. Uh, and in addition, in one thirty four, there is an identification of what districts hotels can be found in or are permitted in. And that should stay in. In addition, the, there had, there is currently in the code that we're looking at right now, um, a definition for bed and breakfast. If I go back to the current version of one thirty four, that which is our current law, uh, there is a, uh, bed and breakfast is a direct reference to tourist home. There's no definition for bed and breakfast. There, a bed and breakfast, it says C, tourist home. And there is a definition for tourist home. So what the code update committee did was it blended together a bed and breakfast and tourist home into the definition of bed and breakfast that you currently see in chapter one thirty four, in our current one thirty four. I think we should remove that definition and should identify those districts in which bed and breakfasts are in, uh, an allowed use.
My, my question with that, I have, I've, at one point I was, I was defining overnight accommodations as anything that allow people to stay overnight, a hotel, a bed and breakfast, a short-term rental. If we take out the definition of overnight accommodations, and I can understand why, that leaves us a hotel and a bed and breakfast in chapter one thirty four. Uh, in certain districts where we're allowing them, as well as certain districts where allowing short-term rentals.
No, 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 no. We would not have in one thirty four any reference to where short-term rentals can be, are permitted. That would be in the short-term rental district.
But they are permitted in R one and B one. So whether or not we mention it in one thirty four.
Sorry. The other, the new chapter will define what districts short-term rentals are permitted in.
Okay, but under, in one thirty four, if there's regulations on where things can be, why wouldn't it be? That seems like it would need to be there, so you would.
Well, what you would, what you would have to do, if you wanted to do that, you would have to then define short-term rentals in chapter one thirty four. And then you would identify what districts it was, uh, a, a short-term rental was allowed in. You might also have to define in one thirty four what the Ts and Cs for short-term rentals are.
Can Marie tell me Ts and Cs again?
Terms and conditions.
Thank you. Why can't we just refer to?
Or to chapter, whatever.
Chapter.
Short-term rentals.
You, you can, you can do that. I, I just thinks, in my mind, my, my little mind, it is, it would be much cleaner to refer all questions about short-term rental to chapter, this new chapter.
But if you're talking about zoning and where things can be, and you're having what can and cannot be in a district, it should, and in the zoning, then it should be mentioned there that short-term rentals, see chapter, whatever, are allowed in B one or R one, R two, whatever, whatever we have. And that's all you need to say.
You would al- you would also need to have that in, in the new chapter as well, I would think.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I would agree. Yeah, definitely.
Now, my, my other question, go ahead.
My concern is that when you have, um, two different chapters that refer to uh, a use that is, uh, a, an approved use for a district, you get into a potential situation, or when you change one chapter and you forget to change the other chapter, you, you, you're in trouble. So the.
How would that happen with, like, saying that this is what's allowed? I, I, I don't see how that would happen, or, and under these conditions anyway.
Today it wouldn't.
But how could it possibly? What would, what would happen that would change it if you had under whichever, whatever section of one thirty four where we're saying what is allowed, we say short-term rentals are allowed.
Right.
Okay, so that's now, and then we have a short-term rental chapter. So down the line, someone decides we're not going to have, they could decide on anything really, and we'd have to change both chapters?
Yes, that, and my concern is, it's always a risk when you have two different chapters identifying, um, a val- uh, valid uses in different districts. It's, it's always a challenge to keep them coordinated and in sync. But if that's what you want to do, then that's what we do.
But I, I know that, I mean, I don't know what the potential risk is. What would, what would that mean? We'd have to change it and send it to the state?
If, if someone, if three years from now, it was decided that, um, a, um, that short-term rentals were appropriate to occur in our three districts.
Right.
Um, then you would need to go back to, and, and you made that change in that chapter. You would then have to come back to one thirty four and make that change as well. If you didn't, then you would have, have conflicting chapters.
Right, and how hard is that? You're going to have to change one, and to change one, my understanding is you'd have to send that back to the state? Or it goes through the whole.
I think it's, you know, I mean, I think there are other parts of the code where we have to cross-reference chapters, um. And so, you know, I, I'm, I want to err on the side of giving the future people a little bit of, um, I mean, I understand that they could miss it, but hopefully there's somebody there that's going to look it over and gonna make sure they don't. One another issue while we're here, um, we have bed and breakfast defined in one thirty four. And we have hotels defined in one thirty four. Now hotels, I believe, are only allowed in the B one district. Am I correct?
I believe that's correct, Fran.
And bed and breakfast as of now are not.
It's not mentioned at all in one thirty four because overnight accommodations was going to include that.
Right, okay, there is a definition of bed and breakfast in one thirty four.
And that, that definition came about by the code update committee when it, when it was consolidating bed and breakfast and tourist home.
Okay, so do we want to eliminate bed and breakfast and not allow them in the village? Do we want to leave them in the village and then determine where they're going to be?
That's, that's a fair question. Current, currently, in the current code, um, bed and breakfast are an as-of-right use for R one, which implies that it's, it is an as, as-of-right use for any district that says, that, that essentially says any use permitted in R one, which includes R three. Um, there may be other districts that also have that phrase in it. But, so currently in our code, bed and breakfasts are permitted in at least R one and R three. I'd have to go back and look at B one and B two and the others.
Here's a little wrinkle that's going to complicate that, um. If someone wants to open up a bed and breakfast in an R one district, then by nature, a bed and breakfast is, is a place that provides, um, a place to sleep, but also it provides food service in the morning, which would mean that they would have to accommodate, reconstruct their, um, kitchen and food service area to comply with health department regulations for food service, um, for food service operations.
And that's fine. And that's fine. And, and if a person, if a person wants to open a bed and breakfast, then that's what they have to go do.
But then the rest of the code says you can't operate a food service operation in a, in an R one district. And you, you know, since it's kind of following, it is kind of falling under, um, uh, home, uh, home occupation.
I'm, I'm sorry, Lynn, I don't think, I don't think R one says you can't have a food service operation.
In, in our, in R one, I don't think you could probably.
R one?
I don't think R one says you cannot have a food service operation.
But that's, that's, you can't.
Commercial.
Well, follow, let me continue my thought here, okay? Because when we were talking about home occupations, you know, people making a living, living from your home, you cannot do one of the provisions in the code that we discussed, discussed at length was not making alter, you, you cannot make unusual alterations to your house that are outside what's normal. You know, what you would normally find in a kit, in a, in a residential kitchen. However, health department regulations would require very different, um, different types of plumbing and different types of, of, of food prep areas, uh, that you would not find in a home house, in, in a home kitchen. For example, and in all, all drains dealing with any kind of food prep or rinsing must be indirect drains. Nobody has indirect drains in their home. Nobody has a three-compartment sink plus a hand sink, a separate hand sink in their home kitchen. These would all be required to do food service in a bed, in a bed and breakfast.
But not if you have a bed and breakfast that just has like a continental type breakfast or, you know.
It, it doesn't matter what you serve. If you're serving anything, if you're serving any food at all, at all, whether it's just a cup of coffee and a, and a piece of, and a muffin. If you're serving that for profit, you have to have indirect drains, you have to have a three-compartment sink or a sanitizing dishwasher and a two-compartment sink and a separate hand wash station, all with indirect drains. None of that you would find in someone's home. So I think we can kind of easily get around this by just saying bed and breakfasts are in B one. And bed and breakfasts are not allowed in R one. I frankly, I don't want a bed and breakfast across the street from me. I'm not particularly fond of having a short-term rental across the street from me. However, bed and breakfast is a, is a larger scale operation than a short-term rental. I don't think the two equate.
Are, are bed and breakfasts need to be licensed?
Yes.
If bed and breakfasts need to be licensed, hotels need to be licensed. I think there's also in's which you define, they also need a license. Why can't we do that? I, I think what Lynn's saying, it just have all commercial buildings, you know, or commercial, you know, buildings providing overnight accommodations, uh, or can only be had, you know, must have license, proper license and only can be in the B one.
And I, I have no problem with saying, um, hotels can only be in B one, which is what we currently say. And if you would like to say that a breakfast can only be in B one, that's fine.
I think that's, that's the path of least resistance here, and I think it's also going to keep residents happy.
And, and I think the key word is commercial, it's a commercial building.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
But a bed and breakfast is typically not a commercial building.
To find hotel or inn, and what the difference is between that and, and, and a short-term rental, one is a commercial building.
Okay, so, and, so we don't define in's and we don't have in's identified anywhere in the code.
But yeah, we have in's in the village or so-called in's or, you know, Pig Hill Inn. What is Pig Hill Inn?
It's a hotel.
And, and how do you differentiate the two? Because I haven't been able to find a way to do that. Hotels have someone that's there.
No, 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 no. Hotel has certain number of rooms.
No, but it also has someone, you know, there, there are those differences, but, yeah, but I think both an inn and hotel would fall into the same. It has so many, I mean, what's a hotel? How many rooms is it? What's that?
Three or more rooms.
Okay, and an inn is how many?
I, I don't know. I've never looked up an inn.
We haven't defined an inn. In our code, a hotel is three or more.
Dictionary and hotels and in's are pretty much synonymous.
I mean, in our code, we've only defined hotel.
Okay, I, I don't, I, just if we have one in the village, it'd be nice to know. Or if someone wants to say, oh, well, it's not a hotel, it's an inn, and, uh, you know.
So now, when we say that, uh, bed and breakfast are only limited to B one, that, um, Main Street for the most part. So now, when we say that, uh, bed and breakfasts are only limited to B-one, that's, um, Main Street for the most part and everything below the trucks. Okay.
Well, except that the, uh, the people on the property behind me are gonna have a B and B, so that.
Their, their grandfather.
Okay, there you go.
They, they are operating, they are operating under the current code.
Yep.
Which says a B and B is, uh, acceptable using in R-one and R-three says all uses in R-one plus blah, 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 blah.
Yep, okay.
Okay, so the, so B and Bs only in, in a, B and B is only in a B-one district?
And how do, and so that's gonna be in the definition for one, in one thirty-four, because say we're gonna say they're allowed and.
No, 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 we don't do that in the definition. We do that in the district regs.
If you're in the dis, if you go into the district regs, isn't that, don't you need a definition of it?
We have, we already have a definition of B and B.
Yeah, the definition of B and B that we have currently says a dwelling owner occupied, maximum number of guest rooms, three paid transient accommodation, no separate cooking facility for guests, maximum stay is thirty continuous days or less. That's the definition that we have currently for B and B. And then when we get to B-one, we're gonna say that that's allowed, right?
Correct.
And then we're gonna remove the definition of overnight accommodations.
Right. And remove any reference to overnight accommodations.
Which is on page eleven.
Okay, I'll, I'll go through it tomorrow, Fran, and identify them.
Okay. And then the references would be in the parking, uh, and all the definition of overnight accom, all the discussion of overnight accommodation that I yapped on for all day today is like, can get thrown out, um.
Okay, I'll also go through parking because there's parking spaces for that.
Okay.
So do we need, we need to add short-term rental definition to one thirty-four though?
I believe it is, it says short-term rental, see chapter, blah, 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 short-term rentals. Is that sufficient?
I think it is.
There is a definition, it's on page thirteen, Dave, or at least my thirteen.
Well, the definition for overnight accommodations, you had changed that to include short-term rentals. I see that that's been changed now.
Well, I just, we just decided to take that out, right?
Yeah, so I, I don't think. And so in the definitions, there is short-term rental, see chapter, blah, 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 blah.
Right.
Do we want to define anything else?
I mean, that's fine with me, if that's.
That should be sufficient. You don't wanna get into, you don't wanna get into any of the details in the definition.
Okay, perfect. That's.
There's, there's nothing worse than having a definition with details. That's right.
Gets confusing. My brain is like fried at this point.
Even as ambiguous as possible.
No, that's, 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 that's John's recommendation. Make your, don't put your, don't put your Ts and Cs in your, in your definitions.
Okay, so we're down to, uh, okay. No, I lost it. I just started. District regulations, uh.
What are you doing or where are you, what are you doing?
I'm on page nineteen, but that's not where I wanna be. I don't know where I'm looking.
Where would you like to be, Fran?
Uh, okay, here I am. Um, I, I'm on page eighteen, regulations for R-one, family residence district, uh, permitted uses. Should we add short-term rentals? Is number six there?
So as, as soon as you put that there, you then have, that implies that it's valid in R-three.
Well, not because I, I put a, I put an exception in R-three. I think I already did that today. Uh, everything in R-one except for, uh, short-term rentals, but I, I believe I did that today as a, uh, the other option would be to put short-term rentals underneath B, special use permit, and I didn't think it fit there because that's special use permit from the planning board. And I didn't think that's where short-term rentals should be.
You have on one thirty-four, the regulations for, uh, R-three, you put all uses permitted in R-one with the exception of short-term rentals.
Okay, that's what I thought I did. So that is.
So, so I'm sorry, so come back to there. Oh. Jumping around.
Page eighteen, page nineteen, something like that.
It keeps jumping. I can't get to.
Nineteen or twenty, or twenty or twenty-one.
So that's, that statement should be all uses permitted in R-one districts with the exception of short-term rentals, period. Short-term rentals are not permitted in R-three districts.
Okay, I will, I will add that. Um, so short-term rentals are listed as, uh, allowed in R-one. Then we go down to R-three and it says, all right, Marie, could you re-say that one more time?
Short-term rental, short-term rentals are not permitted in R-three districts.
Is that in parents?
No, short-term rentals are not permitted in R-three districts. Lowercase, lowercase. Oh, no, good, okay, good. Now, I, under B-one, um, take out, um, short-term rentals.
Okay, right.
Cause you've got it up above, right?
Get it above, okay.
Right.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it should be under the special uses. Okay. Down, down. Okay, here we are. Um. All right, now we're in the B-one district. This refers to, let me see, all, all uses permitted in any residential, we're on page twenty-three. The use is permitted, all uses in any residential district. For regulations for overnight accommodations in B-one, see, that has to come out, right?
Okay, so there you should say, um, short-term rentals are not permitted in a B-one district.
Oh, they are.
I'm sorry. Okay, right, right, right.
So for regulations for short-term rentals in B-one districts, see chapter, blah, blah, blah.
Yep.
See. Also, chapter such and such. Okay. So far, so good.
And now, should, uh, B and Bs be under uses permitted? We just have hotels now, unless I'm missing it.
Um, and yeah, right, in B, in B-one, we want to add B and Bs at bed and breakfast.
For hotels and bed and breakfast at under seven?
Yep.
So add them together or put a separate line? Do we care?
I think you could do it, hotels, inns and bed and breakfast, just as one kind of group of businesses, right?
Uh, don't put in's in there. We haven't defined it.
Tells him bed and breakfast. Regulations one oh four, special, okay. Shopping district, let me just go back. Okay, this, B-two doesn't say anything about stuff that was allowed in R-one, so we're okay.
Yeah.
B-three is okay, restaurants. MU district, okay.
Yeah, that needs to change.
Okay, any use permitted in R-one?
So any use permitted in R-one, one family residence district, accepting accessory apartments and short-term rentals.
Where are we at?
ME one.
Page thirty-one.
Thirty-one, thank you.
MU's. Accessory apartments.
And overnight accommod and short-term rentals are not permitted in an ME one district.
Okay. Is this a parent's? PRs are okay. We don't have any R-one. Okay, we're down to page fifty-four, uh, which covers special uses.
I think up top, we, for the, uh, the, 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 the building heights, page six, you should just leave that and don't change that at all.
Where are you, Dave?
Um, definition for building height, page six.
Page six, okay, let me go back up.
I don't know, or you might have seven, I don't know. We usually don't align.
Okay, that was the one that we were back and forth on.
Yes, so just leave it.
Okay.
There, marked resolved.
Okay, got it, okay.
And you just got the one before that that has said accommodation.
I did, the overnight accommodation thing.
And then next I have fencing, fences.
What page you on?
I'm on page eight.
Whoa, how did I miss all that fun stuff?
So what was the definition for fence?
You want the one that says any structure regardless of composition, Dave?
What's that? The one we have now is a barrier railing or other upright structure, typically a wood or wire, doesn't say, that's us.
What was the previous definition?
I think that's.
That's the only definition I've seen is, that is.
That's the previous one, Marie, he's looking to add the one that's in his comments. Any structure regardless of composition except for a living fence that is erected or ma- maintained for the purpose of enclosing a piece of land or dividing a piece of land into distinct portions. I like bringing, you know, living fence regardless of composition, which I like.
I'm sorry. What does living fence add to this?
Living fence is a, if you're discussing fences, it's a hedge.
A draw.
Yes, I understand, but what will that add to the code?
Uh, you should ask all the other municipalities that question of the code.
I'm sorry, I, I do not understand how that factors into the code.
Because here we, we tell people that they can't have a four, anything bigger than a four-foot fence, but they can build a, put a bush in or a tree or something.
You're telling me, you're telling me now I can't put a tree on my property?
No, no, you can, but I mean, we differentiate that.
Hedge across the front of your property.
I can't?
You can.
Yeah, you can right now.
Okay, and I wanna keep it that way.
But you're asking why? So the reason why I've seen in all the codes, I don't know how many you've looked at, I'm sure as many as I have, they all, a lot of them had living fence and they made reference to that because they controlled that. They don't, they have where it can be set and, and how you have to maintain it, just like the fence. So they put living fence because it's considered a fence, but it's made of organic living material.
Okay, and when I asked how that factors into the code, you've just said that now we have to have, um, uh, Ts and Cs about living fences.
You have to what?
You have to have terms and conditions about where or when or how high or how thick you have a living fence.
Well, let's, let me ask you a question. What is the difference between a living and a fence as far as the character? I mean, what did the CUC say about, why, why is a, a eight-foot hedge that's going off your property or climbing into somewhere else or on the, on the public way? Wh- why does that add character and a fence doesn't? Or what's the definite, what, what was the difference between a hedge and a fence as far as aesthetics go and as far as visuals go of a, of a, of a village? Well, why would you want an eight-foot fence, not want an eight-foot fence, but an eight-foot hedge is okay?
The, the code update committee did not have any problem with fences, and I don't think they, they made any, they made any changes to fences. But what they did do, what they did recommend is that six-foot fence, taller than four-foot fences would not be repaired or placed in kind.
Right, okay, so they, they didn't have a problem, but they, they agreed with the code the way it is that along the front of your property, a fence can only be three or four foot high, whatever, whatever it is, I don't know now, but it's no higher than four foot. So they, they agreed with that.
Yep.
But, but, and so they've also had no, they don't care about hedges, so hedges can grow like eight foot. They, they didn't discuss that at all. They have no problem with a fence going eight foot.
With a hedge.
No, 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 no. So they did have a problem with the fence going eight foot. They wanted to keep it to four feet.
Why?
Because that was felt to be more neighborly.
Oh, and, and an eight-foot hedge, why was the difference that, so this gets to my point. What is the difference if you're, if you're looking at this as character and neighborly and you have a eight-foot fence versus an eight-foot hedge that's going across the front of your property? Why is one more neighborly than the other? Why would you allow a hedge to be eight foot if you don't want a fence to be eight foot?
I might suggest that an eight-foot fence is kind of impermeable, where an eight-foot hedge, you can still kind of see through, well, I mean, depending on the hedge. You know, it's.
Not the ones near me.
Not, it's not just a, a straight wall.
Well, I'm not agreeing that, I'm, I'm not saying I disagree with how high your hedge can go. It's just as far as, as far as a, a, as far as the definition goes, that's why everyone else has it in their definition, because all these other municipalities are controlling it.
And, and, and so controlling it implies that there are rules and regulations about living fences, and I, I have no idea what those would be, so I can't.
Be the same as a fence. There's just a difference between them is what a living fence is, because most people don't consider a hedge a fence, but if it's a fence is being used under the same definition, uh, that it's dividing property and making a distinction between properties, that this is what you need to do.
Well, I don't think our fence, um, sorry.
You can leave it out, I don't care. You know, I just don't really, you know, I look at all these other regulations and all these other municipalities that aren't as cute and quaint as Coal Spring, and they have a lot more restrictions than we have, or they have like restrictions like that, which, which makes sense to me. I mean, if you're gonna have a fence versus, you know, you're not gonna allow a fence to be over four foot, I wouldn't allow a hedge to be over four foot. But if everyone else is fine with, uh, you know, I, I don't, I don't know, I gotta have.
Yeah, there are some streets, um, in the village, and one comes to my, I mean, besides the, the hedges that are between myself and my neighbor in the front here, which are probably eight feet high, the street behind Food Town has hedges in a lot of those houses or whatever that are very high, and I, I don't, I mean, I don't get why those are allowed in high fences or not. I mean, I know because they don't wanna see futon and the garbage and blah, 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 blah. Uh, so maybe there, there could be exceptions for things like that, uh, but in general, I don't, I don't think, you know, I mean, I don't think we can say you can't have a six-foot fence, but you can have a ten-foot hedge. It doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, I know it's always been that way, uh, and I know that people like, you know, have been told, well, you can't put a fence, but you can put hedges, and so you can do that, um. And I, and I agree with Dave to the fact that it's, it's not, you know, it's not much different than putting a fence, I mean, you can get a really nice fence. Uh, you know, that looks pretty, but, you know, it's six feet high, but if you put a six or eight-foot hedge, it's, I mean, the ones that I've seen are pretty thick, you can't see through them at all. I mean, you can see through a fence better than you can see through some of those hedges.
Depends upon the fence.
Regulating, pardon me?
Depends upon the fence, stockade fences, you can't see through.
This is, okay. Maybe we want to start regulating hedges.
Take, take.
Incorporate them into the definition of fences.
I mean, but, but don't go back to me and don't say that it was discussed because of the character and that this is all right and that's not all right, because that is not true. That is a faulty.
I mean, that's the way it's always been here from what I understand.
Sorry, Dave, the, the question of hedging did not come up during the code update committee.
I know it didn't, but the question did come up of what, of, of how high a fence should be.
No, it didn't, no, it didn't.
You just said that a four-foot fence that you felt that that's, that should be in the front of the house, it should be four foot, you just said that.
In the code update committee.
Yes.
The only question about fences that arose was whether or not a, a higher than four-foot fence could, could be replaced in kind for repair or replacement. That was the only thing that came up. Fences, so.
That means they look through the code and the code as it is written right now, says that you can't have anything over three or four-foot fence. On the front of your property, which we have a problem with because we don't know what front is.
No, it doesn't, it just says that within the setbacks, you can't have anything higher than four feet. It doesn't restrict it besides back, front, whatever, it just says within the setbacks.
Will Liz take?
I, I don't know.
Maybe we lost them.
I've been having internet connectivity issues this whole meeting, but I'm wondering if maybe he did too.
Can we, can we define?
Is Michael there? Is, what happened to Dave, Michael?
I don't think Michael's here either.
Yeah, Michael's here, he's under Jeff.
I'm here.
Oh, okay.
What's up, guys?
We lost Dave, is he around?
Uh, he, he's mysteriously vanished, I get, I expect he will, uh, log on again shortly.
Fran, what other topics do we have in one thirty-four?
The last one that we had, I think, was, we were moving down to. Let me see. I think we were on page. Okay, there was a whole section, uh, page fifty-five, the home, home occupations and home professional offices.
I thought we settled on that.
Uh, we, yeah, we're just changing the title. On page, um, fifty-five, home occupations, it should say and home professional offices.
Yeah, I think that's right. Got it, yep.
Okay.
Is everybody okay with the special use permit? On page. On. Fifty-five, is it? Fran.
Yes.
Why, why was, uh, uh, in four, B five? Why is it one use of the premises?
In four B five, uh, there was a, there was a number one in there, I just wrote the word because I didn't know why.
Yeah, it should be, it, there shouldn't be a one in there.
Okay. That's the way it was, I just, I wasn't sure, so I did that.
Yes, and that makes sense. It makes sense what you did.
Okay, um, the permit procedure, um. We're on page fifty-six.
Yes. So, the permit procedure for special use permits, um, are. Oh, God. I just got kicked out of one thirty-four.
Aye.
So it's gotta reload. The special use permits are described in that section.
So all this, all this that you took out, you broke down, right?
All right, let me get back to page fifty-five. Fifty-five. The question last time was, what kind of a permit do you have to apply for? And it's a special use permit. The procedure. The procedure for a special use permit is, um. Is found in.
One thirty-four through F. I'm sorry, where?
It's, it's, it's found in A through F.
A through F.
Right. So F, if you go to page fifty-one. F is the procedure for. All applications for special use permits shall be made to the planning board and writing on forms prescribed by this chapter. And then it goes on and on about, um, special use permit, public hearing, um, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. So then that's, this was all duplication?
It is.
So we're okay, everybody's okay taking this out, clean this up?
Yeah.
Oh, so. Um. In, on page seventy-one. Is it seventy-one or is it seventy-two? Let me see if I can find it again. A seventy-one, seven, A, fee in lieu of Wall Street parking. It had said for properties located in B one or B two zoning districts. Um, the legislative intent behind this local law was to apply just to businesses in the B one district. So, uh, the or B two should be deleted.
Right, yeah, I was good with that.
Great. So we're back to fences.
Uh, we got the exception to yard requirements that we were gonna move?
Uh, yeah, I didn't move it.
Okay, right.
Yeah, you are much better than I at doing this, so if you could move Q.
But.
To, to immediately follow. D.
Okay.
Right, this is on page seventy-three.
So sixty, uh, page sixty is exceptions to yard requirements in residence districts. And then Q is exceptions to.
Do you want to be before D or after D?
I will put it after D.
All right, do we want to hold the discussion on fences until Dave gets back? Do we want to go on with this, or? I don't know if he's gonna get back.
I texted him, I haven't heard back.
That's the only thing left on this, is moving that and then the fences, I think everything else is.
Yep, and I will go through, um, the parking table. Um, you've already inserted bed and breakfast in B one, but I will go through the parking table.
Marie, there was one other thing that I deleted, um, it's on.
What?
It just was hanging out there, it's on the bottom of page eighty.
I'm sorry, it kicked me off of one thirty-four again. So I'm reloading one thirty-four, so I'll take a minute. Okay, I think I'm. Okay, almost there, Fran. Oh, God, it kicked me out again.
Oh, that means it's the end of the night.
Yeah.
That's what happened to Dave.
It, it just, it was, it was an amended, on a date in a local law that didn't seem to refer to anything, so I deleted it, but I wasn't sure if it should be out.
Let me see if I can find it.
It's, um.
See if I can get back eighty.
Between page eighty and eighty-one, or eighty-one and eighty-two.
Okay, let me, it's, it's reloading slowly, slowly, slowly. Okay, reloaded. Page eighty. It's, it's jumping all over the place. Okay, I'm on eighty, all parents, you should. Let me look that up, Fran.
Okay, and that, that was the only other thing, I just think it's hanging out there with nothing to refer to.
Yeah. That's amended. Oh, two, two thousand fourteen. Okay. I guess then we're done.
Fences.
It worked for me, uh, Steve, Lynn.
Yes.
That's fine.
Were a good note.
Yeah.
Just about done.
It's been great working with you.
Thank you, guys.
Indeed.
It's, it's been wonderful, thank you all.
Yes.
Pleasure was mine.
Motion, somebody making a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Double second.
Lynn got that one?
Yes.
Steve.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, all, good night.
Good night.
Take it easy.
See you later.